First up, as we always have, is the pledge of allegiance.
Good evening. Tonight, leading us in the pledge for Ms. Williams' class is Kylie Julian and Sarah Fowler. Would you let these come up and lead us in the pledge? Could everybody please rise?
I would be interested to be the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Thanks for the attendance. Dave, I think we'll just, you can do without the microphone.
Yeah, I can do without the microphone. Mr. Peters.
I'm here.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Here.
Mrs. Dahl.
Here.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Here.
Mr. Spann.
Present.
We have the forum, sir, all present.
Alright, thank you. Next is committee reports. We have our student chief of section, and now I'll turn it over to Joel to introduce our guests.
Well, joining us tonight are fifth and sixth grade Imagination Destination teams, and they're going to give us an update on the status of their qualifications, so if you all would like to come on up.
Thank you for inviting us. Destination Imagination is an educational program that helps students learn valuable skills such as innovative and critical thinking, problem-solving, and teamwork through different STEAM-based challenges. There were five TIP City DI teams that went to regional competition this year. One was the Rising Stars team, a second-grade team, Tip Attack. This is a non-competitive level, so they can't advance to state or anything. Then there were two elementary-level teams, third and fourth-grade team, um...
The Gallup Squad.
The Gallup Squad, and third-grade team, Team Hub. Then there... Then, lastly, we have their two middle-level teams which are here tonight. Fifth-grade team, Team Awkward Silence, and sixth-grade team, Dot One Team. Three TIP DI teams from first place at regionals and advanced to state. For the third-grade team, which is Team Hub, went to the engineering challenge. And the fifth-grade team, Team Awkward Silence, did the service learning challenge. And the sixth-grade team, Dot One Team, did the finals challenge. The fifth and sixth-grade teams advanced to DI Global Finals with second-place finishes at state. We will be representing TIP City and all of DI Region 7, which includes nine counties. We have been preparing for over six months to make it to Global Finals by doing research and consulting with community partners.
We had to prepare.
We had to prepare our materials and plan our presentations. We consulted with experts and learned how to use power tools to build both of our team sets.
We used creative skills and artistic talents to make our costumes, props, and sets. We worked extremely hard as a team to achieve our goal of going to DI Global Finals.
DI Global Finals is in Kansas City, Missouri, on May 22nd to May 25th. We will compete in our challenges, participate in hands-on workshops hosted by NASA, Disney, and other corporations, and interact with kids all over the world through pin trading and other activities. DI Global Finals is the largest annual celebration of creativity in the world. We will be competing with 1,400 teams representing the U.S. and 14 other countries.
But it's expensive to go to Global Finals. Here are the costs. Registration is $5,513 for a total of $11,000. Transportation of our props will cost about $400. T-shirts will cost approximately $300. And trading pins will cost $600. That's a total of $12,300. This doesn't even include housing or food, which is about $12,000 and what we provided by our vendors.
To raise money for this opportunity, we have been fundraising in many different ways. We have done lots of... We have gone door to door to tell our neighbors about DI and to collect donations. We have spoken to local organizations and businesses. We have done an interview with Mr. Woody from the TIP community. We are also holding three restaurant fundraisers. Grounds for Pleasure has already taken place on April 15. Triple A will be on April 29 in Troy. And Hickory River will be on May 6.
We are also planning and organizing a garage sale in Lebanon. We are accepting donations for the garage sale, which will be at 752 Beechwood Drive, TIP City, Ohio. We are also selling Imagine pottery made especially by Sally Watson, my grandmother, for our DI teams. The Imagine signs are $10, and the Imagine rocks are $5, which will be for sale after the presentation.
So as you can see, these kids have worked really, really hard on both accepting their challenge and on their fundraising goal. This has been, without a doubt, an amazing turnaround. We are sitting about today about $7,000 of our $12,000 goal, and that's been in three weeks. So we are so excited that the TIP City community, also their friends and family from all the way to California have been donating, and these kids have been working hard as they showed that they're putting in a lot of sweat and work into this endeavor too. This is not just... They did not expect this to just be a gift. They were willing to work hard on their challenge, achieve the goal of getting to Global Finals, which is the first time a team has been from TIP City in four years. And this is the first time we've ever sent two teams. This is outside of all the work that they have done in school and their extracurricular activities. They put in about three to 15 hours per week since October, working on these team challenges. So these kids have worked towards this goal and preserve this goal, and now they just need a little more support to get there. So we are still accepting sponsorship. You can donate to TIP and Row Community Services. They are our roll-up fund, and they hold our tax-deductible donations. And also, the kids are working hard on their upcoming garage sale and stuff, and selling their pottery. But while I'm here, I'd like to also appreciate and express gratitude to the Rotary, who gave us our first $1,000 that allowed us to register, to even be eligible, or to be eligible for Global. We've also had $700 come from the state DI fund, and $500 from the Legion Auxiliary, and Sons of American Legion, and Stackco Construction. We've had lots and lots of sponsors under that level, but I wanted to give gratitude to those people today. So if you have any questions for our team members.
Can you have the students introduce themselves?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Sarah George. I'm Amelia Wiggers-House.
I'm Elias Steinerger.
I'm Jeffrey Martin.
Colin Snyder.
Parker Kavis.
I'm Juaning Green.
Lauren Anderson.
Max Gustafson.
And we also have Caroline Kavis, who's not here tonight, and Brooke Bayshore. So there's 11 kids and 10 families represented. And I'm Karen Kavis. I'm the team manager for the sixth-grade team.
And I'm Renee Motinami. I'm the team manager for the fifth-grade team.
So thank you, students. We're so glad that you're here tonight to share your information. Hope that's good luck to you, and hope that you give the support to moving to the next level. Thank you. Thank you. Very proud of you. Thank you. We got it.
Okay. Thank you.
From the meeting agenda, we have a special guest from the Ohio Auditor of State here tonight, Joe Bray. He's here with a special presentation.
I don't know if he's got it.
We got to listen. Voice of Kerry.
Alright, it's my honor to be here tonight on behalf of Auditor of State Keith Faber to present the TIP City Schools with an Auditor of State Award. It's important to note that this puts the TIP City Schools in a very selective group. The Auditor of State's office audits merely 5,900 entities, and fewer than 8% of the entities audited are even eligible for this award. The Auditor of State Award is presented to local governments and school districts upon the completion of the financial audit that meets the following criteria of a clean audit report. The entity must file their financial reports with the Auditor of State's office within 150 days of fiscal year end. They must have a clean audit with no findings for recovery, no material citations, or any material weaknesses. They must have no significant deficiencies, no single audit findings, or any question costs. The entity's management letter must contain no comments related to ethics referrals, any question costs, lack of timely report submissions, any reconciliation issues, failure to obtain a timely single audit, findings for recovery, or any public meetings or public records issues. And the entity shall have no other financial concerns. This award represents not only the hard work of all the school employees here in Strive each day to achieve accounting excellence, but I also want to recognize the board, and I want to recognize the superintendent and everybody that has done an excellent job in accounting for every dollar here in the school district and all the offices and departments. But especially, I want to recognize, if you'd step up here, Dave. I especially want to recognize Dave Stevens for his outstanding leadership, his professionalism, and his commitment to fiscal integrity. Job well done. I took it already. That's alright. On behalf of Auditor of State Keith Faber, I'd like to present the Auditor of State Award. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Congratulations.
No, that's alright.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much.
And let me just follow up, express the board's thanks to Dave and his staff and everybody, the administration. Definitely something that we're proud of, and thank you, Joe, for coming tonight to present that. You're welcome. Thank you very much. Okay. Next, on our agenda is an update from Miami Valley Technology Center. Really, we put this in the agenda just kind of as a placeholder. As you know, Russ Millmore is our representative with Miami Valley CTC. He provides the board and the administration with an update as to what's going on there at CTC. And just wanted to acknowledge for the record, we did receive that. We really appreciate his good work in keeping us updated and representing us well there on the CTC board. We don't have him here tonight, and I think it's the kind of thing we'll start doing on an annual basis. Is that my understanding, does that make it more of an annual thing, then become a person, and address us?
He wants to run.
Right.
So I think, and right now, we plan to come maybe in August.
Oh, gotcha.
Actually, I just spoke to him today, and he'd like to come in October and bring some students from the CTC. And that will be our student opportunity, and that's when he'll give us the next update. In addition to the monthly updates that he sends us.
And his current written monthly update is attached to the agenda, and I think it's available there on the website. If anybody wants to take a look at that. Any questions or other concerns about that process? Okay, in case we'll move on to the superintendent and assistant superintendent.
Alright, we want to start off first with our kindergarten registration and open enrollment update. And what I'd like to tell you is that we're 180 plus five, 185 strong with our kindergarteners registration right now, which is a very good spot for us. That's quite high. I want to thank all of the online registration, which is, we're in our second year with that. I think that that, for kindergarten, has been very helpful to our busy families. I want to thank the guidance counselors, actually, Mrs. Gress, who helps with that as well, as Mrs. Parker there, and then that kindergarten team. So they've been very busy. They've conducted their kindergarten screening, and we have that well underway. Open enrollment, those numbers are coming in, and we look very carefully, always monitor what numbers are happening to grade level, seeing where there's capacity for those that are wanting to return, and also those that would like to join us, but is there space? So we always make sure that our open students have enough space and that our classes do not become too overcrowded. So those will continue to arrive, and then we have a fun update. And once that occurs, then we really sit down and it's been about the 1st week of July that we truly send out the letters that confirm about whether families have been accepted and/or sort of they've been banned as well. Any questions on those? Great. Moving on, just want to talk a little bit about the growing need for mental health support for our students. As a district-wide guidance team and administrative team have been coming together, and we've been interviewing a number of agencies, we continue to do that. We have now done second-round interviews with several of them. And we are now in a step to have a meeting and appointment with Tri-County Mental Health Board. And so that will be the board that will serve Miami County. And maybe we are looking at funding and support, what they provide. So as we're looking at our commitment about whether there's new supplementing, that they might be able to do funding for professional development. So we're looking at the whole aspect. We hope to bring a presentation to the workstation on May 8, that the guidance counselors will be involved in particularly looking at all of those that we've been interviewing and showing the aspects, but then really highlighting the ones that we are most interested in bringing forward. And then also, at that time, indicating that we would like to finalize that then at our Miami. As we look forward to next year and hopefully bring a therapist on board that will serve our entire district, predominantly working mostly at our middle school and high school, but also being available at our elementary buildings. So we'll take a look at that, and then as there's questions, we'll have more information to be giving out to you between now and May 8. But if there's any further questions, make sure to let myself know, or Mr. Beerhoff, also Kristin Schmidt. She's one of the queen people with the guidance team, and she's been doing a great job of this.
So that will be at least one full-time person?
That's what we're looking at. We would like to have five days. And that's one of the difficulties. Some of the agencies that we really like are not able to provide a full five days for us. We see that we need three or more, and we would prefer to have five, even for this beginning year.
I would try to strike for five, most definitely.
Is this, and maybe this is too deep in the woods, but is this where the students actually get services that are then billed to their insurance? Or is this us providing therapy for students? How is this going to work?
Right. So this would be one sign that would provide therapy stations during the school day. And some of those are supplemented by Medicaid that applies. Some are able to take insurance depending on which agencies we go with. And then that's where the supplement from outside, if they're nonprofits, or sometimes just through mental health agencies, that are county agencies, they are able to come support, sometimes providing one-day for schools, which would help with our expenses, that they would be able to do that.
Do they also serve as a referral service as well?
Yes, absolutely. And we did summer stations as well. How would that be handled so that they would have some, I'll say, contact and continuous support over the summer as well? Our next time is just community engagements and facility update. We continue to be reaching out to our community and trying to keep everyone informed. Most recently, we have hired for the debut station, providing one information we do have at this point about the traffic study. That should be, the finalization should be coming soon, but we continue to look at multiple ways. One of the big things that we're working toward is getting traffic off the pipe and having an area, expanded area within the school property for some of the staging and drop-off. Also looking at patterns where we make sure that students are being dropped off on the right side of the car that makes it closest to the curb so that they're not crossing in front of cars. So it seems like a very basic thing, but when you begin looking at it and you're trying to simplify things, the direction you're going and where the car ends up near the curb is very important. So a lot of steps to this, and certainly, Clint and Jerz that are, is the company that's providing this service, they've been very open to dialogue and the considerations and things that are important to our district. We've had coffee chats as well. We continue to do that. I believe since our last session here as a board, we also were able to meet with our senior citizens. There were about 50 members attending that day, and so we had a lot of great contact. And there was a team of four or five of us that actually went. So we continue to be open for that. We have Liberty Commons coming up, Random House, several other places that we'll be touching base with. And we're busy right now making, I'll call it, appointments, but sketching for the buildings once again to talk with their staff before we go to make stuff, see if they have any questions for us. Any questions on updates, facilities? I did. I got excited about the facilities, didn't I? Alright, headed back to that literature discussion. Devil in the Grove is a literature piece that we're going to actually vote on a little bit later as far as adding that to our language arts curriculum. We're very, very pleased to have a partnership with our local library, TIP City Library. And I think maybe there may be a comment about that a little bit later, so I don't want to get stepped too far ahead. But Gilbert King is the author for Devil in the Grove, and he's a huge prize winner. And we're very, very excited about the opportunity for him to interact with our advanced placement students in a variety of different areas, so that be English language arts as well as our social studies. And we're excited about the team that was put together, the committee that was put together to review that. The committee consisted of community members, teachers, administration, and I think just people that both present and past have been very involved with the digging piece, how do you say?
Literary Peace Prize.
Literary Peace Prize, yes. And that they have a keen interest in that and see how that could fit. And I do know that that particular piece is looking at trying to have a stronger connection with our youth, beyond high school students, so that we can begin instilling some of those thoughts and that reflection in their daily practice and also in their reading studies. I would open it up to ask, I know that there was to be an attachment that was the additional piece. I'm not so sure. That would be down there closer to actually the resolution, I believe. But it is really looking and providing that a Friday board update, how the AP forces can then, standards can with the J4 meetings. Do you find that there? Yes. Alright.
So do you want questions now, or are we going to wait until we're going to vote?
Actually, I think now would be great, and because I've got a great team here to help me field these. So you may begin, Mr. Spann. I can see you have a great question.
So the book could be considered a little controversial. There's some things in the book that, and TIP City has had some experience with some controversial books or subjects in the past. And we have made our parents aware of that this book is part of the curriculum ahead of the reading assignment. I'm trying to make sure that we are going to do that again, so that they have an opportunity. We've always offered an opportunity to opt to a different course of study in this. If that is also part of our options, or how we might handle somebody that takes offense to this book as part of the curriculum.
That's a very good question. So, one, I do know that first having the book approved would make us, because I know that we are taking a number of steps as far as planning interesting, I mean, there's been a lot of hours already put into developing the course words and the pieces to go with this. But as we look at students, that's an important aspect. And I will let the language arts department or Mr. Beerhoff, if you want particularly respond to that, you're open.
So, yes, there would be, if there was a reason that a parent or did not want their student to participate in reading the book, then that would be something that we would discuss and find an appropriate alternative assignment for that. You know, to speak to the controversial nature of the book, I think the controversy lies in the fact that the use of the language. There's no denying the fact that you had four African-American males in the late 1940s who were wrongfully accused and wrongfully convicted of a crime. And really, it kind of takes what students read previously with To Kill a Mockingbird, where an African-American in the Jim Crow South is put on trial and wrongfully convicted again, and puts it into reality, and really kind of shows our most advanced students what that experience really was like for African-Americans in the Jim Crow South. Now, beyond that, it opens up our ELA students, our language arts students, to a nonfiction text. And so they see a different genre. They see how they're able to look at how nonfiction literature is written compared to fictional literature. And the attachment that's with the board agenda and that was in your Friday board update a while back really kind of lists out where we see this fitting in the curriculum. In our government classes, there's an excellent fit with the 14th Amendment. You know, there is multiple Supreme Court cases that came out of this. And we feel it's a very powerful book for our students. And kind of the icing on the cake is the partnership with the library and the Dayton Literary Peace Prize to be able to bring that author in to speak. You know, I don't want to put the cart before the horse here and say, well, we got to have this book because we got the author coming in. No, we see the book fitting within our curriculum, and then we are able to bring the author in to provide that further enhancement for our students.
One thing I like that about the high school in particular is that you, since becoming principal here, you're very data-driven. And I especially really appreciate that. And I'm so grateful that Corinne, with her background, was the board member that read the 410-page book. Thank you for that. Sorry, sorry that took some time away from the baby. But I like that you saw the test scores and saw that we needed to get our grades kind of moving more in the upward trend for the contemporary part of, you're the teacher, ELA, right? So I like that you did that. And, you know, to me, that shows that there's a method behind the madness, and I appreciate that.
It was, it was a really thoughtful group of people that came together. Mr. Bellis, Ms. Noel, Ms. Mahaney, they heard the feedback at the table from parents. And they were just, they considered that, and they strengthened up what they hadn't thought of before. And the connections they made with the content, how it could help in areas where they don't have a piece of literature that addresses contemporary. It was well thought out.
Yeah, did I hear that you're not going to read the whole 410-page book? Is that what I, maybe I should talk to this person? Is that what I heard?
It depends on the class.
Okay, right.
So Mr. Bellis is going to be using excerpts, whereas the English classes, both the incoming juniors and the incoming seniors will be reading the entire book. So actually, the kids are getting away with it a little bit because they get a twofer with their summer reading because it'll cover both classes.
Oh, sure.
So if they're in AP, if they're in AP US History.
It is a big book, though, so it's still watering.
So, yeah, that's true. It's, it works out.
And it addresses that piece of doing more with one thing. The depth of knowledge, the rigor, really deep diving into a book, and expanding in all the different ways we can.
Right, with the cross-curricular connection. We're really excited about it.
And we are so lucky to have an amazing library. I mean, LISA does an amazing job. They're always willing to work with us. And, you know, being in a small community, that's very helpful. And so we always appreciate that partnership.
Yeah, I'm just looking, making sure that our parents are aware and, absolutely. Nothing against the book. I think it's the right thing to do for our students, but I want to make sure that our parents are on board and aware, or that they have another option.
And I spoke with Ms. Pritchard. She used to be our librarian here. And she said that they regularly partner with Centerville and Oakwood City Schools to do these kind of... they regularly partner with Centerville and Oakwood City Schools to do these kind of things and that she was really proud that, you know, now she was going to get to work with TIP and continue her work, working with high school kids and authors and great pieces of literature.
So I think the answer to your question, Sam, is we have a policy and a procedure and we'll follow it.
That's correct.
Great.
All right, very good, good discussion. And we are going to now move to the resident educator update.
And this is when we are winding up the year, so I have resident educators that are finishing year four, I have six of those and so we're, they've actually finished their, as of April 15th, they completed their year four work, so I can click the button and I actually have already for them to get their five-year licensure. I have four that have taken the RESA test, that's the Resident Educator Assessment, and for those of you who are going into the teaching field, you get to do that. Mrs. Harris, you didn't have to, you were fortunate, but those that go in now, it is different than it was a few years ago and it's been, I think it's better, so now they can take it in year two and year three. So we had four, two in year two people take it and two year three people take the Resident Educator Assessment and I have five people on year one and they're finalizing with their mentors. I want to thank the mentors, I know they aren't here, but I appreciate the work that they do with the new teachers because I touch base with them several times through the year, but what really counts is that daily, almost daily for most of them, I talked to one today and he said, yeah, my mentor comes in almost every day just to check in, touch base to see how I'm doing, see if I need anything each day. And we appreciate that, our mentors are great, they do a great job when they have the opportunity to do that. And I want to thank the high school students for coming tonight. We won't say anything about this being your last shot or anything, but thanks for coming through, it's good to see your smiling faces.
All right, to that, we'll turn it back over to the president.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, we are up to citizens' comments now. You know, we've got several people who want to address the board, just a couple of quick reminders that I always need to do before we have the session. We do limit comments to five minutes. That's not because we don't want to hear from you or want to cut you off, it's just a time thing. We have a lot, you know, a busy agenda to get through and so we have always done that. So if I cut you off, I'm not trying to be rude or anything, I'm just, keep going, so.
And you can pop that timer up on the-
Okay, oh, that'll be able to time. Also another reminder, it's kind of a, and I know this is frustrating for people sometimes, but it is kind of a one-way communication, we're here to kind of hear what you have to say and receive it. We don't typically engage in much kind of back and forth, you know. You know, the board members are all available by email and other methods, so, and again, that's just to keep the meeting from getting too bogged down in any one issue because there is a lot to get to, so we hope you understand that. Okay, I'll put the list up here or I'll keep it a drew. Whitmerman?
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Collington, members of the school board. Thank you for this opportunity to address you. My name is Drew Whitmerman, I am the Adult Services Librarian at the Tip City Public Library. The library is excited to partner with the Dayton Literary Peace Prize and the Tippecanoe High School to bring Gilbert King to address students about his book Devil in the Grove, Third Grading Marshall, The Grown Boys and the Dawn of New America. In 2013, this book was awarded the Pulitzer Prize for General Nonfiction. Dayton Literary Peace Prize awarded his book as the runner-up for nonfiction in that same year. The Dayton Literary Peace Prize is the first and only annual U.S. literary award recognizing adult fiction and nonfiction books that promote peace, having led readers to a better understanding of other cultures, peoples, religions, and political points of view. As part of his visit, students would hear King's presentation of peace, ask questions, have their books signed, and a few would join in for lunch after the event concludes. It is our hope to incorporate this book in the AP and accelerated social studies and Language Arts classes. We ask you to include this book in the school's curriculum. In the future, we hope to contribute to the Dayton Literary Peace Prize's goal of creating a curriculum of peace for high school students. This project is already underway with Kettering Fairmont High School. In the words of a social studies teacher who has used this book in his class said, "It's a great option, challenging but compelling. It certainly hits a lot of themes about oppression, law, and justice, and the fight for one's rights that are really emblematic of an American experience." I would like to thank the Tip City Foundation for their support of this project by covering the costs associated with bringing Gilbert King to the high school. There is currently a pending grant with the Duke Foundation to support the cost of 150 copies of his book and additional learning opportunities for students. I am happy to answer any questions about this project. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next one is Lemon Harris.
Well, hi, I'm just here to give you an update on what's happening with the bond issue. I'm sure you've seen the signs out. Our sign committee has done an awesome job getting those signs out, we know where they're at so that we can recollect them. I'm not sure if we have a lot of signs left, but I think you can still try to get one signed up. Be on the lookout for letters to the editor. We've had a great outpouring of support from people in the community that want to write letters to the editors in support of this bond issue. Coming up next, Taste of TIP at Gingham'sburg Church, we're going to be there passing out flyers and getting the word out more. Fun fair's coming up, we plan to have our committee out passing out flyers, postcards. We're going to be around the food trucks, so come on out and see us for that. We have continued meetings on Wednesday at 6 o'clock at the library. I want to thank the continued support from the board members coming to the meetings. It's just been an awesome experience for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Sure you don't want to see me up here because you know I am a vote no on the levy, strong and hard. Reasons are, I don't think the board is transparent enough. You guys are trying to shove this levy down our throats when we already have the emergency levy is coming up for reelection or renewal soon, so we have to worry about that. But now, just the other day, you know, we're handed out a whole new packet and there were updates put on this packet and I believe the updates were put on there probably because somebody recognized that things weren't included and so they've got put on, but I don't think they got put on until people were called out on it. The traffic study done now, someone asked in a meeting weeks and weeks ago about a traffic study, now the traffic study's being done, but I'll tell you what the answer is. If the answer's the same thing that it was when you built this school, the answer is the traffic will be horrendous. Because back when they asked for money for the high school here, they told us the reason they would not build where LT Ball was, they wouldn't expand on the high school there was because of traffic issues. So now I have to ask, if you're bringing over all those students from the other schools into that same little area, how does that change the traffic? And I don't think it does, I think you're going to have those same bad traffic issues that supposedly you encouraged us to build this school because the traffic was going to be so bad over there. We were also told there wasn't enough green space over there, they couldn't expand onto LT Ball, they take away the green space. So I, it's as if, you know, I don't know what to believe anymore, the stories we were told then are the stories we're being told now. Another thing is the football stadium. I want to know how many donations we make out of our checkbook, our school checkbook every year to different places, facilities, groups, how many donations are written out of there? So where does that money come, if you're going to make a donation from the school to somewhere, where does it come from?
The students raising money.
Did the students raise that money that came from Premier?
No.
They did not. And the superintendent just told me at the coffee chat that that was a donation that was made from the school to the football stadium so the turf could be laid before football season started. He didn't want those guys running out there on that old turf that my son ran on, he played football. So how is that considered a donation? Or is it not a donation?
It's part of the contract.
It's part of the contract. But that contract from Premier says that we pay 15,000, let me see what that contract says right here. I have the contract. The contract has that we pay 15,000 a year to a athletic trainer, we have 20,000 that we can spend on signage, up to that, anything over that the school is going to pay. That that's for updates on baseball diets we have, the junior high football field, those things. I don't see where that money, once it goes into the school's checkbook, that becomes our, the taxpayer, the school's money. So why is that then written out to pay for turf down at the stadium when we said we were not going to pay for turf and also pay for a new high, or a new school? I mean, that's what we said. Everybody came up and you guys wanted to pass the stadium levy and we said, no, we're not going to pay for stadium and we're not going to pay for school. So now all of a sudden we had this money, $750,000 written to run its construction in two different checks, two different checks written to pay for turf. And the superintendent told me at the coffee chat it was a donation. So who, you know, do we write donations out of our checkbooks? Who do we write them to and who pays, who approves the donations? Is it John Q. Public out here, us, the taxpayers, or is it you guys behind the scenes that decide I'm going to give to this charity and that charity and this charity? So I'm just trying to find out where, who decided that money should be a donation. And I understand Premier's contract, I've read Premier's contract over and over again. I understand that, but that's for current things that are out here, that's not to rebuild Tip City public land. Tip City owns that football field. We don't. We lease it from them, but we don't own it. So why is this money, how did this donation money get there?
Okay, Ms. Lemon, five minutes is up.
Oh, I know, and I'll get no answers to any of my questions and you guys will just, you're not transparent.
Sure.
Not happy with you and my no sign will be open my yard suite.
Beyond the president's comments, so I'll, just want to also address just briefly the levy, just to remind everyone that May 7th is the voting day. There is a tremendous amount of information on the school's website about the levy. The school has, the administrators were very hard to get information out, they've conducted over the past seven years numerous community engagement sessions. Put hours and hours of work and stress and worry into this process. Eric Fister, who's not here tonight, of course, just put a tremendous amount of effort into it, Rheta and Galen and Dave and the whole staff and lots of others, I'm sure, that have gone into it. So what it adds up to is there's actually a ton of information on the website, all those, or at least the last several of those community engagement sessions are available via video, you can come to, go to the school's website and watch those. If you'd like to come to one, I don't think there'll be another one before the vote, but you can still watch those ones that are out there. They gave a presentation on how to calculate exactly how much this levy would be, the mileage and how much change in your taxes that might be. And so it's all out there, it's just a matter of wanting to look, work for it and find it, if you can find it. Again, the date is May 7th and so encourage you to go vote. With that, I'll, next approval of minutes, and then Dave, do you want the microphone or?
I'll give it.
All right. Okay, so we have minutes here, approval of the March 18th regular meeting and April 8th court session, we have a motion.
I'll move, second.
Moved and seconded to approve these minutes and the discussion.
Chris, were you the second?
Yes, sir.
No, I'm sorry.
Corinne's room. No, I'm sorry.
Corinne.
The only thing I'd like to add, Mrs. Heatherly did call me earlier today, we did clarify what item of the March 18th meeting when we were discussing this science curriculum. I listed that we had received survey responses from 78 students, we just added a little bit more from the video what was there. It was 78 responses from the, how the Tip City science curriculum prepared them for athletics. And then there were a couple spelling errors that I missed, so the only change from what you've seen unless you looked later today on that.
I would just add that Cruz Johnson was absent, was not here to do the pledge, he was one of the four students that he wrote, so he was doing the pledge that night.
Cruz Johnson? So I would say that would just be an amendment to the minutes. Any other questions or issues?
Okay, now we're ready for vote.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Ventures?
Yes.
Okay, let's, the minutes are approved. Now I'll turn it over to Dave from the Treasury Board. All right, I guess, do you want me to run through them?
Yeah, just go ahead.
Okay. First is the monthly financial report. Move to approve.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded Sam and Joe Ellen. Any discussion?
I really have nothing to add to this, if you have any questions, let me know.
Okay. There is no discussion, I guess we're ready for vote.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mr. Ventures?
Yes.
All right, next is the fiscal year 2019 appropriation amendments. Would there be a motion on that?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded Corinne and Joe Ellen. Any discussion?
I'll just note that we had a large outpouring of donations from the Broadway Students for the Pennies for Patients fundraiser activity, this is coins that students had turned in to go to the Pennies for Patients Foundation. They raised over $6,700 this year, that is a lot of change, it's very heavy.
Did you have to roll all of that?
I did not, I told them that they could go turn it into coin star and have them count it for them.
If you're a nonprofit, coin star does it for free, they wait for fees, so they were very excited when Dave told them, it was insane.
Yeah, so that was, that was the big 18 fund and then we also had some, a small increase, I apologize. We had the foundation grants come in, so we had to increase our 019 account, whatever comes in, we increase our appropriations so they can spend it. And then we had a large increase in the 300 account for a donation that came in for any score board.
There's no further discussion, we're ready for vote.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Ventures?
Yes.
All right, that motion's approved. Next is the purchase order certification, then a mail.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded Sam and Corinne to accept the written mail for the discussion. Any questions? It was very important, we'll go ahead and vote on this.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Ventures?
Yes.
Next IED, oh, that motion's approved, next- Next, IED fundraiser. Any new votes?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded Teresa and Corinne. Any discussion?
I appreciate the data, Mr. Fast, quick to get off the floor and Mr. Quon.
Thank you.
He's hiding.
How can senators tell us they're hiding? Is that even possible?
Okay, I think we're ready for a vote on this.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
And that is, that motion's approved as well. Moving on to number eight, old business, the old business on the agenda tonight. And so we move on to new business. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Count.
I made leave of absence, recommend approval of the following needs of absence within 2019, 2020 school year as per the agenda.
Not much more.
Go ahead.
All right. Approved and seconded Joe Ellen and Sam. We'll call Sam the second. All right, any discussion?
So this is consistent with our policy?
Yes, it is. It also allows us time to really find quality substitutes, long-term substitutes.
So this isn't for now, it's for?
It's for next school year.
Gotcha, okay. That guy made me nervous trying to find this.
Right.
Okay, perfect.
There's no further discussion, we're ready for a vote.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
And that motion's approved.
I have B, recommendation, recommended approval to accept the following resignations as per the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All right, moved and seconded Sam and Corinne. Any discussion?
I do want to mention that Mr. Gilton Londer has been a highly respected and very talented teacher and we will miss him and we wish him well in his new endeavor.
Okay.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
No.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
Item C, recommended approval?
That motion's approved. I saw Dave wasn't having it.
I'm sorry.
All right, now it's.
Now it's approved, all right. Item C, recommended approval to hire Jin Yin Chin, Ying Chin, to be an ESL translator for Ashley Higgin, excuse me, and Ashley Higgin as a substitute teacher for the 2018-19 school year pending proper certification and paperwork.
Motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Moved and seconded Corinne, excuse me, Corinne and Sam. Any discussion?
I know it's a little late in the year to be adding, but it does get busy as we have conferences at the end of the year. And so this gives us another professional to help us with that, with the translation. And then also substitutes are often needed as we close the year with just too many activities with some of our staff members with graduating seniors and things of that nature. So this will be helpful to our district.
So did this need just pop up or why would we do Ying Chen this summer year?
Ying Chen did it last year as well and she is to help interpret some of our testing. And we only need her really during this short time. So that's why she's here, to help us on our testing.
Okay.
No further discussion, I'm ready for a vote.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
And that motion's approved.
Item D, recommended approval of the following 2019 summer staff for the Stagecrafters Summer Camp and that's Brian Wonker, he's the opening director, open producer for Disney's Proson Jr.
Make a motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded Joe Ellen and Sam. Any discussion?
I'll just say this title's pretty exciting and I think the students are going to be delighted to be a part of that. Registration does open up in a few days, so I know that the families out there will watch that very carefully because it does fill up quickly. And that is posted on the district website.
I just have a really quick question. It says that they're paying him out of summer school staffing and he's also on the TIP Foundation Grant as well. So I was just wondering why it looks like he's getting paid in two different places?
So I do know predominantly the summer, the grant piece off those for things such as the cats t-shirts, those sorts of things. Without that in front of me, I really can't speak further to that. But Mr. Stevens, are you aware?
Is that on the next agenda?
Yeah, it's down on J. It says Stagecrafters Summer Theater Camp and then it says Brian Wonker, two thousand dollars.
I'd have to look into that more. He's not here at all.
And then they used to get a stipend too, so that would be like another.
No, that's part of the pay.
They're not doing that anymore?
That's part of the summer school pay.
Okay, gotcha.
So is he getting paid two different amounts or?
He shouldn't be getting paid an additional amount. That should be for additional supplies for the program. Right. And it also goes to help pay for student helpers. That's what it did last year.
Student directors, they do get a small payment.
It says down on J, it says his name, like we're paying for him.
Clyde Pippa Graham. Every one of those people are Clyde Pippa Graham.
We did change it though, I mean, because it used to be a stipend, so now it's part of the summer.
Yes, I just didn't know where.
Probably different than last year when we were first on. It's hard to keep up with that.
Well, it states, okay, I'm going to take this back. I'm looking at the public content of item J and it says that that is paid out of summer school staffing. So the money's going into the general fund to help pay for that program from the summer school staffing. So I think that is for, it's not on top of. He would not receive.
I think I asked the same question last year and the response was, every year the Clyde Pippa Grant and it's used for production costs.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'd like to see how that grant is written.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. I think we're ready for a vote.
Okay, now I'm just confused.
Sorry, we're on D.
Item D.
So what I just said, I apologize. I'm still, that was still part of item D where it says paid out of summer school staffing. My screen did not click down to item J. Approval. So yeah, I'll still have to look into what that is. I apologize for my confusion here.
Okay.
Did we have first and then second?
We did and it didn't say anything.
Oh, sorry, it's Joe Ellen's name.
Got it. Anything else?
We're ready.
Voting?
I think we're ready.
All right. Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
That motion's approved.
Item E, this is about the Global Innovation Development Committee, recommend approval of payment for following staff members for their work throughout the 2018-19 school year as per the agenda.
Need a motion?
I'll move.
Go ahead.
I'll move, second.
All right, it's moved and seconded Corinne and Teresa. Any discussion?
I'll just say I do appreciate their hard work. This is an important piece for our staff. They actually oversee and look at each of our staff members. There's a floating spreadsheet in rotation of those that have their licenses that are coming up to be due. There's prompts that are provided electronically to say that you, will be having your license that will become up due and then they are the ones that recognize the provisional hours do or do not count toward that minimum.
Okay, I think we're ready for a vote.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
And that motion's approved.
Item M, recommend approval to add the book Devil in the Grove by Gilbert Kane to the high school curriculum literature list.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
It's moved and seconded Sam and Joe. Any discussion?
I'm wondering if we want to reflect the full title. I didn't have to say.
Devil in the Grove, wait. Oh, gotcha, right.
So probably for the minutes, it should be Thurgood Marshall, the Grove Land Boys and the Dawn of the New America. I'll pass that on to you.
All right, put that on. Do we get free shipping on that?
You get a hundred and fifty copies of the grant list, you're right.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, very good. I think we're ready, Dave, whenever you want.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
And that motion's approved.
Item G, this is an exciting one. Recommend approval of the one hundred and ninety-five graduates for the graduation class of 2019, subject to successful completion of all requirements for graduation and the fulfillment of all obligations. The seniors' last day will be May 24th. Seniors will exempt from school on May 28th, 29th and 30th, 2019. And the list is attached.
Okay, need a motion?
I'll make a motion, second.
A lot of celebration out in the crowd.
We haven't voted yet.
We haven't voted yet.
All right, yeah, I'm sorry. Joe Ellen and Teresa?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Guys, we're ready for a vote, no further discussion?
We're really going to let them do it? The other side, are they ready?
They're more than ready.
They didn't want to come, they tried not coming today.
You saw them.
We kiboshed that.
This is an important vote, seniors, so pay attention.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Actually, it was me that seconded.
I thought it was.
Heatherly, Dunaway.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes. And that motion's approved. Congratulations to all the seniors on that list.
Mostly the parents.
Congratulations, seniors and parents. That's very exciting. In fact, I want to congratulate the high school students. One of the things I regret to say was that ninety-seven point five percent Tip City students on the day they did this school seatbelt challenge, we had the best results out of Miami County, so that's awesome.
Wow, congratulations.
What we do every year.
Same people.
Well, this is something that we wanted of late. Yeah, it's usually down to the parents. I know we had ninety-seven point five, there was a ninety-seven point one, so it's pretty close. So thank you for your leadership. That's it. All right. Item H, recommend approval of the 2019-2020 representative of Tip City High School and Tip City Middle School of the Ohio Athletic Association and agree to conduct, excuse me, to conduct athletic programs in accordance with the Ohio High School Athletic Association Constitution and bylaws as well as and regulations.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
It's moved and seconded Teresa and Corinne. Any discussion? No discussion, we're ready for a vote.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
And that motion's approved.
Item I, recommend approval to accept an eight thousand dollars donation from the Denaway Family Foundation to the purchase of a new solar digital scoreboard for the Tip City baseball program.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded Sam and Corinne. Any discussion?
Thank you.
It's oxygen and it looks smart.
I didn't design it, so that goes to Jake.
All right.
Nice job with that.
Great design. He had the hard part, I had the easy part.
You got that wrong.
No, not really. I wouldn't want to design a scoreboard. I would not want to design a scoreboard, no thanks on that. No?
Okay, Spano?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
And that motion's approved.
Item K, recommend approval of permission to contract transportation with Troy Christian Schools for the 2019-2020 school year. Troy Christian will provide transportation for students.
It's okay, just finish, just finish Jake.
All right, I'll go back to Jake. All right, item J, recommend approval to accept five thousand eight hundred and thirty-one dollars in grant dollars from the TIP Foundation.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded Teresa and Joe. Any discussion?
Thank you, Tip Foundation.
Would you like me to announce what they are?
Oh, sure, yeah.
Yeah, at the coffee chat, an offer illustrator visit as well as a boot shop program. At Broadway, we have a field trip to the Ohio caverns. At LT Ball, we have a breakout EDU school bundle, hope that sounds like technology. And at the high school, we have Stagecrafters Summer Theater Camp.
I was going to say, I mean, remember, and the names do indicate the grant, right?
That is correct.
That's easily what it is, yeah. And I think, I'm pretty sure they do that every year with the Stagecrafters.
That is correct.
Yes, it is.
They're very generous with that.
It's been for a long time.
Long time.
I always appreciate the generosity of the foundation.
Yes, thank you. Okay, I think we're ready for a vote.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
And that motion's approved.
All right, I am now ready for item K. Recommend approval of permission to contract transportation with Troy Christian Schools for the 2019-2020 school year. school year. Troy Christian will provide transportation for students enrolled at Troy Christian School that reside within the Tip City Exempt Village District.
I'll make the motion. Sam first.
Alright, moved in second, it's Sam and Joelle. Any discussion? Alright, hearing none?
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
And that motion is approved.
Item L, recommend approval of permission to contract transportation with Senior Assistance Incorporated for the two thousand nineteen, twenty-twenty school year. Senior Assistance Incorporated will provide transportation to and from the Ohio State School for the Blind in Columbus, Ohio, for one student.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Moved in second, it's Teresa and Sam. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to another.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Item M, recommend approval of premier occupational health in Troy, Ohio, as the agent for driver's physicals and drug alcohol testing for the two thousand nineteen, twenty-twenty school year.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, it's moved in second, Teresa and Karen, any discussion? Hearing none?
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Item N, approval of the construct, recommend approval of the construction contract between Brunz General Contracting, Tip Pride Association, and Tip City Exempt Village Schools for Phase Two items for the stadium at Tip City Park.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Moved in second, it's Sam and Joelle, any discussion?
I have a question, but I don't know if I ask Mr. Kaufman, right, 'cause you're new, or Mr. Stevens. Um, so how much do we still owe on Phase One?
We have a loan outstanding for a hundred and twenty thousand.
So, the the original Phase One was, I'm going by memory, I should've looked this up, was it one point five million? Was that the Phase One?
I think it was most of the one point six.
One point si- I think that is right, okay, one point six million. So, out of that one point six million, we only have an outstanding balance of a hundred and twenty thousand?
Correct.
Okay.
Just to clarify, when you say "we," you mean Tip Pride?
Tip Pride.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, Tip Pride. Well, that is confusing because it's Tip Pride, it's the city, it's the school, and that, that...
I have one more question about that, the same Phase One. Who do you guys pay for that loan?
Union National Park.
So, you're paying a bank?
A bank has for that. We have a loan with money.
I guess I'm just confused because the school paid seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so it was one point six million. And if you go to the list that you just recently sent us of your donors, it's five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So, were there some...
That's still, that's, that's our outstanding budget.
Absolutely.
Correct.
One point six million minus seven fifty is not six hundred. So, where, where's the difference? I guess I'm trying to figure that out.
Well, the, the five hundred and eighty-two is to the pledges that we have yet to receive.
Absolutely.
We've already received all the other pledges and the money is...
So, did you get some one times then? Because, you hear what I'm saying? Because if somebody donates ten thousand dollars?
Yes.
People think that we did, that donors just give a ten thousand dollar check, and it's actually a thousand dollars every year for ten years.
And everybody pays different money, so we've received several one...
That would make sense. Because I don't wanna get into a situation where now we're on Phase Two, and the hole keeps getting bigger?
Correct.
And we're accruing more debt?
Yep.
And the other thing is, there hasn't really been good communication?
Okay.
No fault of yours. I know you just started two weeks ago. But it's like pulling teeth, getting bank statements. I had to ask for two weeks to get these last bank statements, and I, we just received them on Thursday.
Okay, yeah.
So, there has got to be better communication. For a board member to read in the paper about Phase Two and get the budget from the paper when it should've been coming from Tip Pride, I just feel like that's egregious.
And I apologize. I, I, I made my decision.
Right, so I...
So, I will absolutely keep you, you know, aware of what's going on. I can send you all the financials, and I'll keep those on a monthly basis. And, um, currently, I send them to Mr. Stevens. Should I be sending them directly to the board?
I don't know, Dave, because I, we don't receive them. We don't receive bank statements, so how does, how do you want that to work?
Dave just counts them themselves, so, yeah.
You could send them May offs for a month.
Okay.
That's why it's one point contact.
Sure, absolutely.
And how, I don't know if we ever answered this question from a while ago, but who carries the liability and insurance? Is that the school, or is it Tip Pride?
It's Tip Pride.
It is Tip Pride, okay. And who's gonna do the schedule with summer camps and all that? The city or Tip Pride? You know, like, people wanna rent it for soccer camp, or a football camp, or...
Oh, I understand, yeah.
For Tip Pride itself.
We have, we have insurance, sorry. I misunderstood you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Are you talking about the student department?
Well, yeah, because people are gonna wanna do...
The athletics.
Okay, that's the athletic department, okay, great.
I should think Gary's in charge of that.
And thank you, TPA, for your volunteer time on this. A lot of time and dedication. Appreciate your input.
Yeah, I would just feel more comfortable if we had monthly bank statements.
Sure, absolutely.
And like I said, I'm not, you are new, so please understand that you were just sitting in that seat tonight for my question, but I've been asking these questions for over a year.
You will get those on a...
So, I, I would appreciate that.
Okay, so I, I also have a lot of questions.
Sure.
So, um, and I don't know if these are all for you. So, you, so you have an outstanding balance on Phase One of one hundred and twenty thousand?
Correct.
And then your portion of Phase Two would be five hundred and...
Eighty-three thousand.
Eighty-three thousand?
Ninety-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine.
Yeah.
Okay.
Five hundred and ninety-three thousand.
Okay, so, and then, um, you have donor pledges of five hundred and eighty-two thousand?
Correct.
So, and, like, how does, um, how does the money for the Phase Two, how do you guys do that? Are you gonna get another loan through a bank?
Yes, yes.
And, and you're able to secure your own loans?
Yes.
So, the school's not, we're not co-signing loans?
No, absolutely not.
Tip City Pride is doing their own ones, okay?
We're taking four or five of them.
And then also, we have the city in there. So, is, do the restrooms belong to us?
The city, the facility is still owned by, the facility's still owned by the city. They're just paying in the funds, they're paying it to us as a donation, and then we will use that money from the O three fund to pay for, pay Brunz direct, which is noted in this contract.
But, like, what's... The restrooms will be shared, just like they are today. The, the restrooms are shared, uh, shared space, um, today, or have done, or shared space.
So, what's our agreement with the city as far as use of it? Like, who's the ultimate? Because we can't all have, like, a key to the bathroom. So, who, like, owns the bathroom?
Are they unlocked twenty-four hours a day?
You know what I mean?
Yes, the, the restrooms themselves are open. They...
Twenty-four seven?
They can be open on either side, just as they are right now, able to do that. So, for the park use, when we're not using the stadium, then it's open on the park side. And then when we have our stadium activities, then we open, of course, on our side.
So, how do we communicate that between the city and the schools, as far as who's using the facility when?
Athletics again.
So, you, so you and the, so you and somebody from the city coordinate?
Yeah, the restrooms, the reason why they're working, they're two hundred and whatever thousand dollars is because the restrooms, the various we had to put in, a certain amount of restrooms would be up to par with codes and that. So, the restroom's gonna have a divider in the middle, and the city's gonna have their portion that's open twenty-four seven all year round, and it's gonna be heated as well. We're gonna have our section, where it's gonna be cut off, and we don't have to worry about the water running, closing the garage, the work anymore, and parking people out because of the restrooms. They're gonna have their own restroom. Now, when we have large events, like Troy, Butler, people are coming down on football, we're gonna need all those restrooms just to accommodate everybody. Then we can lock the outside door, raise up the garage doors, so that way we have the usage of the whole restroom. That's something that we're gonna communicate with the city, just like we communicate with the roundhouse now for our locker room, and say, we're here this Friday night, we're gonna have a large crowd, so we're gonna need all the restrooms. So, yeah, communication would be through the athletic department and the city.
Thank you. And then I also had a question about, um, the contract. I called some other business managers in some other school districts, and they said typically what happens when they have an athletic booster or, um, a pride situation, that that group donates to the school, and then the school engages in the contract, and that the, the association that's raising money, the five oh one three C, whatever it's called, is never on a contract?
I don't say never, this...
Very rarely? I mean, the people that I talked to said that they never heard of it, and I talked to some big school districts around here.
We, we talked with attorneys on this, and this is how TPA wanted, excuse me, we let TPA have control of that. We still wanted a say in it, which is why we still go through this process. But this was approved by an attorney as well, so this is an appropriate way of doing this.
But I mean, have you ever heard of other school districts that do this?
I'm not the one that looked into this, that was Mr. Fister.
We've gone, Sydney did exactly the same thing.
Sydney did something, because I, I mean, like, I've talked to other districts around here, they did not do one where a five oh three C is on the agreement. Because that's another, a whole nother ball of wax. Like, what happens if they don't have money to finish out this contract? Then we're on the hook for it, right?
No.
They, they have the liability.
We have, Tip Pride has the liability behind this.
Well, I, I know that, I read that in there, but I mean, at, at the end of the day, if a five oh three C cannot raise the money...
Let's say we're on Phase Three or something, and there's...
Well, no, I, I mean, at the end of this one, if, if they can't make all their payments, like, who, and the, the restrooms belong to Tip City Schools, and there are restrooms, who, who pays?
We don't...
Brunz is just gonna go, I guess we made a bad agreement, and walk away, and we don't have to pay any money?
I know that they met with Brunz to actually look at the most revised version of the contract to make sure that they were on board with that.
But I'm just wondering what happens if they don't raise enough money? If Brunz is seriously just gonna go, oh, okay, I guess we, I guess we messed that one up. I mean, they seem like a pretty big company to...
Well, I don't, so, we have, we're working with, um, additional donors right now. We're not gonna disclose their names, because we have not received firm commitments or contracts from them. But we have one that is, um, roughly fifty hundred thousand, and we're working on four other ones. So, so, at the end of the day, we'll have enough money, we'll have pledges, we'll have contracts to collect all the money necessary to finish this.
The other four donors are between five and six figures each, aside from that fifty a hundred thousand.
And again, we're not trying to put you on the hot seat, 'cause you're new.
Right.
Um, at the end of the day, you know, when we get asked questions out in the community, the community, this, you know, in, in all effect, it's gonna be the school that ends up picking up the tab. Because if it doesn't get built, if Tip Pride doesn't raise the money, then people are gonna be coming to the board meetings. You can't leave it half finished. It's, you know, all these, you know, all these questions, and then all the, we have to answer to that. So, you know, we're asking a lot of questions because we want you guys to be successful, because when you're successful, we're successful, and we don't want worst-case scenario situations happening. And because we, as a school board, have not been receiving financial statements since the inception of Tip Pride, again, not your fault, but we received one financial state, one bank statement at an actual board meeting, I think, and I think just these recent ones was it.
No, you received the other statements previously.
Maybe one, okay, yeah, maybe one. So, I mean, we just have a lot of questions because we haven't seen bank statements.
Sure, absolutely.
And as this gets further along, the debt just keeps accruing. And that's what we wanna try to avoid.
Absolutely, and so do I.
Didn't need to put, you know, we're not trying to put you on the hot seat.
Right, right.
We're trying to make this a win-win for everybody. It's very convoluted, because you have the city, you have Tip Pride, you have the Board of Education, not Tip City Schools, but the Board of Education. That's us. So, that's discerning.
And, and I guess, like, for me, the, the sticky point is that it's not just between Tip City Schools?
Right.
And Brunz. We also have Tip Pride. So, I'm not sure, like, what, what happens if there needs, if, if there is some kind of unforeseen in building, and then it costs an additional amount? Who, does that put us on the, on the hook to pay for it?
Well, what I will say is that we have to sit down meetings periodically with all, all entities, meaning Tip Pride, the Tip City Schools, as well as the construction Brunz. We, we sit at the table, and they would give us an update if something was running over, so at least it wouldn't be eleventh hour piece. It would be, they'd see that there would be some increase in cost, and then we would have to problem solve, put our heads together.
And I guess I, I really felt strongly about making sure that we took care of educational spaces before we looked at athletic spaces. And this is so uncertain and outside of the realm of what I'm used to seeing, where a Tip City Pride Association would donate that money, and then we, as a school board, would enter into a very simple upfront contract, where then we take that money and we build the bathrooms, and it's cut and dry, and it's, and it is what it is. And this is so fuzzy and, and convoluted and, and fuzzy to me, and unlike other things that I've seen. And I know you said that Sydney has done something similar to this. I've not seen that, and I'm, I'm not sure how that worked, if they had the money upfront, or if their five oh three C had to take a loan and then pay back the loan. You know, I, I, I'm not sure about that. But the other districts that I talked to said that they never enter contracts with a fundraising arm. It's always the school and whoever's building it does the contract. And I'm not sure, um...
So, are you saying you would prefer TPA write checks in school?
That's what everybody else that I talked to said that they do.
And that's fine, but then you have those people who can't understand that that's a donation towards a stadium, and think that's, that's their tax pay. For instance, tonight...
And I under, I understand that part, too. But I think that legally, it, that, that we could explain. You know, we could do a big thing in the newspaper and invite, and do a big check and say, oh, yeah, they donated this. This, you know, we can put a plaque on a bathroom.
If we did that for career, it'd make some questions.
Right, right. And, and there's always gonna still be questions. Entering a contract with the five oh three C is gonna be even, I, I, I don't know how I feel about that. I don't know if that's being a good steward of...
I would feel better if we could own the land.
Oh, yeah, that would be the ultimate, yeah.
I mean, from, from day one, my whole thing is, why are we building a stadium on a piece of land that we don't own? You don't rent a house from somebody and then build a two hundred thousand dollar garage, and then for the owner of the home. That, that's exactly what we're doing. We're building a six million dollar stadium on a piece of land we don't own. That, that, that just makes no sense. Sorry, there was a question somewhere in the bathroom? Did somebody say something?
No.
Oh.
I was gonna, I was gonna, so, when we started Tip Pride, the whole reason for it was because you guys were trying to put different things on the levy with the facilities. And so, we started Tip Pride to take building the facility away from you guys, so you can concentrate on education and the building. So, I wasn't part of the meeting, but when the attorneys all met, they thought the cleanest way was for Tip Pride to be the fundraising piece, us entering the contract, so you guys can concentrate on your facilities and education. So, that's what we did. Um, and I can tell you that we're not gonna give up, and we're gonna finish it. And I know that there's hesitations with it, but we've stuck by this program for two years, and I'm not gonna stop until we have raised every cent. And I know that that's only my word, but...
Yeah, and, and I don't think anybody does the...
And I understand, I understand where you're coming from, how, how it seems convoluted, but that's kind of why we did it, so you guys can concentrate on the education piece and the facility. And, you know, we took that piece on ourselves, so you guys didn't have to worry about that. So, that didn't have to go on the levy for the taxpayers.
Angie, you bring up a great point. And first of all, please know that we appreciate your hard work. And again, this isn't a knock on you at all.
Oh, I know, I know.
I mean, trust me, we, you know, I've been in sales for a living. I know, I used to knock on doors. It, it's hard work.
Yeah.
I also do all the, you know, I, I get where you're coming from. Um, the other convoluted piece of this, I guess the biggest convoluted piece, is originally the board approved Tip Pride as a private fundraising organization. That was it. Ju, sorry, just to raise funds, but it's been everything. Tip Pride has done the design, met with all of the, you know, the, you know, all the extra stuff, too.
Well, you know, everyone...
So, that's confusing to us as a board, because that's not what we approved. As a board, we approved the inception of Tip Pride to be a fundraising organization. And that's not you, that's not your fault, that's not Mr. Kaufman's fault, that's simply lack of communication. When the board doesn't have lack of communication with Tip Pride, you know, and then we get something on our board agenda, approve this, we've been in the dark this whole time. So, just moving forward, I think, pretty much with anything in life, if communication solves lots of issues, communication, I think, solves pretty much all issues. So... Communication, I think, solves pretty much all issues, so...
So would you rather, like, monthly updates, if we would come monthly and give you guys an update on where we are?
And I don't know if, if you've been, if somebody's been sending them to Mr. Stevens, I don't know what that communication, you know, issue is, but, you know, just bank statements and, I mean, I don't need your, "Oh, I knocked on 50 doors today, you know, I've got four protections." That, that's on you guys, and we, I'm not a micromanager, and hopefully none of the rest of us are either, but, you know, we're just not in the loop. So then when we see things in the paper, it's hard for, we don't, people ask us questions, because we're the face of the school, and we can't answer them, because we don't know anything. So, you know, I just think that, that we can do better, that's all.
To address the Tipp Pride not being involved, I mean, I guess, you know, they were involved for a few reasons. We approved them as the, as the fundraising arm, but, you know, they were, they were involved in the design, they've been, uh, part of the contracts, and talking to Brunz.
But that wasn't what we approved them for, it was for fundraising only.
Keep in mind, they did that for the purpose of making sure that, you know, what, what if we came in with the design, it's built, it's going to cost us 10 million, we're going to put all this fancy stuff in there, and then we expect them to go fundraising? That was to make them a part of that, so they understood what was being proposed in the project, and they were a part of knowing what was involved. At the end of the day, it was Tipp City Schools, it was, it was JD and Gary Fester, who were actually approving and deciding what went in, the building and the project. Tipp Pride was along and seen what was involved, bids, all of that kind of stuff, so they understood that, you know what, we didn't build this $6 million building that we could, or project that, that could have been built for three, they thought could have been built for 3 million. They were able to be involved in all of that, so they were aware of how the, how the project got to the dollar value now.
So again, that's just communication, right? I mean, simple communication, it's, it's easy.
Let me say, we deviated from the contract we're holding on tonight, so a lot of these issues, you know, are kind of for another topic.
They've been deep-rooted, I guess, Mr. Venters.
I understand, but...
Get it all out there, and then we're done with it.
We're just, uh, I, I get it, but we're just trying to hold on to this.
So why doesn't Tipp City have to be on this contract?
Well, you are on the contract.
No.
I think she means the actual city of Tipp City, yeah.
Because it's a collaboration of those three, and what means the...
Yeah, so I was just wondering why they're not representing. I'm just wondering, I guess for me, I, I said that I was not going to do anything more with the stadium until we took care of educational spaces. And this looks like, and I think it's going to look like to our public, that we're more worried about what's going on down at the stadium than we are what's going on in our classrooms. And I don't, and, and I don't want to be that person that goes, "Oh, wait, but, see, we're working with Tipp Pride, and they're really going to pay for it, but they got a loan and this, and then have this big, long conversation about what's really going on," when I just want it to be very cut and dry. We're taking care of educational spaces, and then we're going to take care of athletic spaces. If this was on after the, I, I believe the bond is going to pass, if this was on June 7th, I wouldn't have a problem with it.
Look, we started this two years ago, and this is just a process in going, we can't put everything in a halt. Like, from two years ago, we broke this out due to media, how we're doing this private funding, so if people aren't informed, they don't watch TV, they don't look at social media, they see that this is totally separate. This is why, this is why CPA's here. We can't just halt the whole athletic thing. We have a stadium that needs to be done as well as classrooms, and that's why it's totally two separate entities.
Right.
We're not involved in this together. And, and I don't, we need to say it till we're limited, because we're still not around that board, you're not transparent enough. Yes, we are. And we've been transparent with everything we've done so far in this district, and moving forward, and it's separate. I mean, there's no other way about it, but we can't just halt the stadium, because there's a lot of work to be done, and there's a lot of people involved that's doing great work, and we just can't put that in a halt for this, because a few people are going to throw it in our face, or you've already done more academics. It's not true. And it's not extracurricular, it's co-curricular, but this athletic stadium is also an educational piece. Like, I don't understand why people say that athletic facilities aren't an educational piece. Yes, there's a lot of life lessons that these students learn playing athletics, more than they learn in the classroom. So it's not an extracurricular, it's co-curricular, and I see this as an educational piece.
It, it most definitely is an educational piece, but when we're trying to build classroom spaces, it doesn't look like, um, we're, we're saying what we mean, and we meaning what we're saying. So, I, yeah.
You just said that it was separate, so they should know that, that it's separate. I, I think it is what it is. I mean, but we have, this has been a two-year stage phase, and this is a part that the school's not liable into it, the work, they're working, the verbiage in there shows that it's, Tipp City Schools are not going to be liable for this. This is just giving you guys's approval, yes, we understand what's going on, and let's hit the work button. We're at a stage now where the restrooms and concession stands are done, and if we halt any longer, we're not going to have any restroom down there for the season, or a concession stand, which is going to be terrible. Uh, we're going to have portal, let's line it up all across the campus.
They already started the work down there?
Yes, they did.
They already done.
Even though it says April 23rd, they've already started.
Oh.
It says here, work to start April 23rd.
The city, the city who owns the property came in and forced the restroom down.
So there's no bathrooms there.
The city tore down?
Yes.
Yeah, just to, to...
This is, this is...
I know, it's getting crazy.